This is the July 23 meeting of the Millville Planning Board. We're waiting to get things started. It is 6:31 PM. And Pam, do you want to take the agenda out of order to do reorganization first thing?
I would say yes, except I'm still hoping that Bill's gonna hop on in a second. So, let's take it out of order. If you don't mind, can we take it out of order and start with the electronic signatures?
Sure thing. So skipping down to item, let's see. Eight on the agenda. Is discussion possible adoption of Mass General Chapter 110G regarding the use of electronic signatures by the board members pursuant to a recent amendment of Mass D and X signatures. So, the, basically this will allow electronic signatures to carry the same weight as what any signatures, if the board chooses to approve that motion. So I can make the motion and then we can take a roll call vote. If the board does approve it, then we would just need to submit the certificate and go to the registry. So that is the process. So is there any discussion on this item before we make the motion? Okay. So moves that the Millville Planning Board here by recognizes and accepts the provisions of MGL Chapter 110G regarding electronic signatures. And its members will henceforth execute documents with electronic signature or any signatures and that both will carry the same. We will wait end of that. So we need to make the vote by roll call. So please say your name.
I'll start. Pam Maloney, and I vote yea.
Chris Drew, I vote yea.
Justin Allen, I vote yea.
Brian Mulally, I vote yea.
Can you guys hear me because I cannot hear you?
Yeah, your connection is very, very off.
Thought it was just me.
Okay.
That was four yea's.
Okay. All right. So moving on to the next item regarding the A and R. Unfortunately, we, I did not realize that there was an extra notification requirement to this where we needed to notify the registry if we wanted to vote on this item under the amendment, which we did not do. We advertised in compliance with meeting law. I did not send a letter to the registry. On closer read, it does look like that is a requirement. But we can discuss if the board would also be interested in designating one person that would be able to sign land plans on behalf of the entire board. If that sounds like something that makes sense. Just to clarify, the electronic signatures can be used for recorded land plans, but not for registered land plans. So this would really only apply to those instances where there is a registered land plan or typically have to sign. You would be able to designate, for example, a chair to sign that on behalf of the entire board.
I'm having a hard time getting like every other word.
I can, I can step in. I think this is just the item on the agenda that it's to simplify our process so that we have one person sign off on the A and R signatures anyway, so that we don't have to have everybody there to sign them. Which in, if this keeps going on, it might make an awful lot of sense for us to consider. But I think what she's saying is we can't vote on it today because we didn't notify the registry in advance. But I think we can have discussion if you have any questions about it and if, you know, if it makes sense for her to move forward with putting this on to the next agenda.
Okay.
Does anybody not think this sounds like a good idea?
No, I think given like, you know, given everything going on and just the way things are changing electronically, I think it makes sense.
I agree.
Okay, so Sarah, let's, let's move forward with putting that on to the next agenda. And I think I see that Bill's joined, so we can go to the next item.
Do we want to jump back to reorganization of the planning board then? And I must admit, I don't actually know how the board needs to get reorganized.
We need to, we need to elect a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we keep Pam Maloney as chair of the planning board for this next year, fiscal year.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Pam.
All right. Do we have a nomination for a vice chair?
I'll nominate Brian Mulally again to be vice chair.
I'll second that.
Is that okay with you, Brian?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I, I know in the past, we've had a secretary. I know last time, we didn't vote for somebody. But in this past year where we've been intermittently without a planner, we hope to have somebody who could help with the notes and the organization of the paperwork. So I think it makes sense for us to, to vote for a secretary. I'll make a motion then. I make the motion that Justin Allen be the secretary.
I'll second that.
Chris, that wouldn't fit you, but you're busy.
That's okay.
If you're not yet, you will be.
Congratulations.
That was a long game of chicken that I just lost.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Awesome. All right. I am going to continue to take some things out of order because I know Bill's on with us right now, but he might not be able to be on the entire call with us. So because of that, I'm going to move forward. For 190 Central Street. Reasoning for this is we have a conflict. So I know, Chris, do you want to just quickly explain to everybody?
Sure. I actually, I have a professional relationship with, with Richard Copeland. So I just felt it would be best to, you know, just to avoid any conflict or, you know, miscommunication, to simply abstain from a vote, from voting on this one, our, this one project.
And I think, you know, moving forward, we, we could have gone and asked the Board of Selectmen for if it was okay to have Chris vote on this. But with the timeframe, the way that it is, I, I think this probably makes the most sense. We don't want to have.
Yeah, I don't want to cause any problems for myself or for, or for Richard, you know, on the project. So the easiest thing is to just bow out on this one and then it keeps it nicely clean and everybody's on the same page.
All that being said, we'll open the public hearing for site plan approval and special permit review for 190 Central Street. And I think I saw them on the call. Sarah, if one of you wants to kind of give a quick overview of what we're looking at here?
Yeah, Richard, are you on? Do you want to give an overview of the application?
He's muted. He's, he's on the call with Copeland, but he's currently muted.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So yes, what I'm seeking permission for is as outlined in the application for, to utilize the property for my roofing company for, for storage, for cold storage for equipment, dumpsters, you know, empty dumpsters, roofing equipment. We do a residential and commercial roofing company. We have, so I'm looking to use the property for, like I said, equipment, light, light materials, non-hazardous, and so on. I'm not looking, it's basically a minor site plan. I'm not changing the topography of the, of the property or the grades. Everything's staying the same and just fixing the building up, the facade of the building and fencing it in. So I'm looking to park the equipment behind the fenced-in area and add a couple of parking spaces in the front. And it's pretty much it. So everything will be hidden behind the chain link fence, the privacy fence.
Pam, do we have anybody on from the public?
Says there's three people, but no one has written anything yet.
Okay.
I actually, question, it looks like the fence is in the buffer to the vegetated wetlands. Have you been in touch with the conservation commission?
What, what was that? I didn't quite hear that. It was broken up.
Sure. It looks like the fence is in the buffer for the wetlands adjacent to your site. Have you been in touch with the conservation commission?
No. I, when I got the permit for the, I didn't need a permit for the fence. The fence only goes along the road, the roadside by the sidewalk, and then it cuts back 20 feet. So it's within the 100 feet buffer of the wetlands, I do believe. To my knowledge, that is. The property's not completely fenced in. It's only in the outside perimeter of the road. And it, and it returns in 20 feet. And I do believe when the fence company put it up, they'd measured out, so it's within the 100 foot buffer of the, the wetlands.
I'll start off by asking a question, but first off, I, I want to say that I think the property up there is looking amazing. It's come a very long way and I see nothing so far good of coming out of this. On your application, I see that you have listed what you're, you're looking for, for storage. As you had stated, 12 dumpsters, vehicles, equipment and light supplies, light repair in the office. I guess we'll start at the beginning. My first question, you say 12 dumpsters. Are those dumpsters going to be empty at all times? Are they going to have, do you foresee them having debris in them? If so, how long do you think that that would be there on the site?
Basically, the dumpsters will be empty most of the time. But say if we happen to come back from the evening from the day of work, then we'd be, you know, a full dumpster. There could be debris in the dumpster, but it will be emptied out within the 24 hours. I'm not going to be storing full dumpsters there. It's just like going from job to job. Or if I get back late, the dump's not open, it'll obviously, there'll be debris in the dumpsters for, you know, a short period of time.
So you won't be dropping, you won't be dropping them there? Won't be dropping and storing them. You'll be just waiting till the next business day?
Correct.
Okay. And vehicle wise, do you foresee how many vehicles you might have on the property? But, I mean, you're pretty much allowed anything that's registered, but.
Roughly, we have six vehicles that are registered
Yes.
under my company.
Okay. And how about employees' vehicles?
Yeah, the utility vans. We have two utility, three utility vans and two pickup trucks and, and a dumpster truck.
Okay. Those are the only questions I have.
Brian, on your questions, is there, is it a good idea to cap like the amount of dumpsters that can have waste on them?
I think that's probably something we should entertain. That's my, my opinion. That way, you know, they're, they're, for the unforeseen, we, you know, there can't be storage or move on to the next job and then dump later, so.
In the past, we've, we've had that there could be one dumpster that remains full.
Yeah, I think, I think, I agree with that, but I think what it was, was we allowed as many as they had that they could stay on the truck.
Yeah.
Right. And I think the one we had previously had, might have had two trucks and he might have had, Bill, we have two dumpsters that had debris, but I could be wrong. But that, that might be something we, we entertain also, that the dumpster with the material is to, you know, stay on the vehicle. This is all construction debris, not, not trash, correct?
Correct. It's mostly, we do mostly asphalt shingle roofing, so the asphalt shingles with, with, so it, not going to be storing, like I said, it would just be stored for the, you know, the time in case the dumps close a weekend or whatever, we don't get to the dump. But I'm not looking to store full dumpsters of debris.
So do we want to take a percentage, do we want to take a percentage of the number of dumpsters and say, you know, quarter?
Let's ask the applicant. What do you think you'd have there at any, any one given time that you might, might have to have debris in them for, for a night or a day?
I would say, I'm looking, say possibly for a day, maybe two, four, up to four, maybe. Sometimes we don't get to the dump right away and I do the dump runs. I'll take a day of doing dump runs, you know, three or four hours. So I'll just, you know, they might sit there, you know, covered. But then they'll be dumped within the, you know, 48 hours. So I might have a day of like four dumpsters having debris in them, but they'll be cleaned out within 48 hours.
So it sounds like four.
Yes.
What size are your dumpsters?
They are 10 yarders, most of them, and I have two 15s, two 15 yarders. Let's see, I've got, right now I only have seven, but I was looking to probably purchase a few more. I wanted to apply at a time just in case I expand, but right now we only have seven dumpsters.
Yep.
So we have like a four 10 yarders, two 15s, and a 20.
You said that you had six vehicles currently, is that correct?
Yes, we've got one, two, three, yes, six vehicles that are registered, you know, as driving vehicles. Then we have equipment, also have a man lift and another piece of equipment, like a roof buggy thing that puts around. That's also registered.
And are they anticipated to be parked behind the fence?
Yes. Everything will be parked behind the fence except for like a pickup truck or so.
There'd be no unregistered vehicles on the property?
Correct. All our equipment is registered and insured.
Whose boat is that?
What boat? There is no boat.
I feel like I drove by recently and there was a boat, no?
Oh, that was stored over there. That was inside. I had stored, it's my boat. I had, took it outside for a while and now it's, it's moved to a different location.
I think, I think I'm all set with, with that.
Bill, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions right now.
I'd like to echo what Brian said, though. The property looks really good. Good job on it.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's no other questions, and we don't have anything coming in from the public, do you all want to close the hearing, take a vote?
Yeah, do we put the provisions, do we add them now during the meeting or after we close the vote?
We'll send over an order of conditions, so we would make the vote that we'd be approving with the conditions. And the conditions that we've discussed right now would be that any dumpsters on the property need to be emptied within 24 hours. And you can have up to four dumpsters with debris in it overnight with, as long as they remain on the vehicle and no unregistered vehicles on the property.
I do think he did ask, he did state 48 hours.
Forty-eight hours.
That, that, you know, probably is real quick if you work on a Saturday and then you gotta wait until Monday, so.
Correct. That's right.
That's right.
So we don't need to, we'll draw up the draft decision and then the applicant will have a chance to appeal that if anything is not in line with what was discussed tonight.
Perfect. All right, any other discussion? All right, so I hear a motion to close hearing for 190 Central Street.
Make the motion to close the hearing for 190 Central Street.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Hey, do you want to make a motion to approve the special permit and site plan for this property?
I make the motion to accept the site plan for 190 Central Street. Applicant of Copeland Roofing and Storage Facility. Also, the special permit for Elite Holdings LLC, Richard Copeland, for 190 Central Street, also with the provisions outlined.
I will second that motion.
Great motion made by Brian, seconded by Justin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations. Sarah will be following up with the order of conditions and get you through the rest of this process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to doing business in Millville.
Thank you.
Is there any, I'll just go back to the order on the agenda unless there's any other things we need to take out of order for any reason? Okay, so that would bring us to 7 Providence Street Special Permit Amendment. So I know Sarah had sent over all of this and Sarah, maybe you could just quickly review with everybody what we're, what we're voting on here, which is, correct me if I'm wrong. It's whether or not we want to accept the amendments as a minor update?
That's correct. So the amendment is solely adding another business name. It's Rupa Incorporated. So that's highlighted in every instance that it occurs in the word document that I had sent around. And what the board would be voting on is whether this constitutes a minor amendment, so the board could just vote to approve the amended permit. And then the applicant would just refile the amended permit with the registry. Or if you think that it constitutes a major amendment and would require a new application and hearing process.
Gotcha. And I know the applicant, I think I saw him on the call.
Yeah, yep.
Matthew, do you want to explain this a little further for everybody?
I just need to add a business name. I'm not, I haven't used the business name yet. It's just been a slogan. I haven't done any business under that corporation. I have another corporation too, but I've just never used it. But this one, I'm, I'm looking to use it. So I figured I'd just add it to the roster, to the other business names, I guess, to make it good, yeah?
So you're not changing any of the actual business that's going on?
Awesome.
The actual business that's happening at the property is the same. This is just a different name?
Everybody's still writing checks M and J. It's just, I figure I just add it for future reference. So that's what I was thinking, you know? It's the way it looks a little better too, maybe. I don't know.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant on, on this particular application or this request?
What is the, uh, I see on the applicant, I'm just curious, it's, um, what is the address of the business?
Seven Providence Street.
So what's eighteen Cliff Road in Bellingham?
That's an old residential address.
Okay. That's just still on our paperwork.
Yeah, it's all two years maybe.
Okay. I have no issues.
I don't have any.
In general, this seems minor to me, does anybody have a different thought?
No, I appreciate, you know, I appreciate going through the proper channels and, you know, coming back to us, um, to add this and not just adding this arbitrarily.
Alright, thank you.
So Sarah, we would, we would take a vote that we agree that this is a minor update? And then we wouldn't need to do anything else?
Yeah, so the board would just vote that this constitutes a minor update and then I would, I'll just draft the amended permit and. File it with the clerk and then after the twenty-day appeal period, um, Matthew, you can file it with the registry. We'll have that updated permanent file.
Okay.
All right, um. Then I'll hear a motion to accept these amendments as a minor amendment. To the special permit for seven Providence Street.
I'll make the, uh, make the motion to accept this.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Right, um. The next item on the agenda is to open the public hearing for fifty-one West Street, a special permit for accessory apartment. We're opening the special permit hearing, seven oh three. Do we have Charles or Tina Landry on the call?
Yes, we're here. How you doing? Good evening.
Good evening, do you want to explain a little bit about what you're doing here?
We're just gonna build, uh, an in-law apartment for my, my in-law, because they can't do stairs no more and they got a two-story house. So we're gonna build a single-level apartment for them.
Everybody got that one right?
Yeah, I actually have a, I have a kind of a general question, if you will, um, and it goes back to one that we, another one that we recently did. Assuming that this gets approved, is there a way that this could get approved so that it would be with the house and not just with the current owner? So if down the road they sell at some point for one reason or another. The person buying doesn't have to go through the same steps to get it re-approved when it was already approved, do you know what I'm saying? Is that something we can do or is that not really, it's kind of above our, our pay grade, if you will?
Um, I'm gonna lean on Sarah for the answer to that one, but I think it makes a lot of sense.
Uh, I think it is certainly something that can be done, um, I could do a little bit of digging into. It, it would require some bylaw revisions, um, which I'm not sure if this board wants to take on at this point, um. Probably fall town meeting would be the next time you could get any bylaw revisions approved, so it would be a, a little further out. Uh, but we could definitely look into that, I know a lot of pre-existing non-conforming uses are not required. Get a special permit whenever ownership changes in other communities, so I, I could take a look into that. But it is something that, um, we would just need to change that section five oh two a little bit to make that happen, but I think it could be done.
I think, uh, I would love to look into that.
Yeah.
I, I believe that, um. And, and I guess I could be wrong, but I, I'm pretty sure, um, if it's done this way. And it's done correctly and filed with the registry of deeds, it's gonna be put on the deed of the property. I believe this will follow the, uh, fifty-one West Street for life when they sell it. They'd be able to sell it with the, uh, in-law apartment. And the reason, you know, I say that it's gonna, it's gonna be filed through the ZBA. It's, that's already in our accessory apartments, um, by law. Being done correctly, now. In conversation about the last one that we had to go through, the reason they had to come in is because that was done illegally. Without permits, um, and our building commissioner was brought in to. Do an inspection because they had new owners and they wanted to do some work and he found there was no paperwork on it. Uh, once this, it's done legally, I mean, with, you're not gonna make somebody take out an, an in-law apartment just because they're gonna move. I believe this is gonna follow the property and be, uh, on, you know, right on the assessors listed with the assessment in our town hall.
I think our bylaws right now, it says that it, it does not follow the sale, it, it's written into our bylaws.
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking of it, just in a general term more, you know, for, for financing kind of thing, for someone buying it, you know. That now has to go through the process again, like, is there a simpler way, just in general, you know, that we could look at? You know, obviously tonight clearly isn't the night where we can have all the answers necessarily, but, you know, is it something that, you know, as a board? We can maybe look at to kind of, again, clean up this, this area of the, uh, bylaws.
Yeah, there, there's a, one piece of the bylaws, I have it up, so I'll read it, it just says. Such permit shall automatically terminate upon the sale, transfer or other change in ownership of the property. With such accessory apartment forms as part unless the property is being purchased with the intent to continue the use. In such a case, they have to make a transfer of the special permit.
Okay, so they can transfer the, the, the permit with the sale and I'm sure the realtors and lawyers would take care of that. To follow the property.
Yeah, and then I think for us, if we wanted to look at, I guess we could discuss whether or not we wanted to.
It, it should be, it should be a lot easier than that, I mean.
Yeah.
Once it's allowed, it, if we allowed it, one, it should be allowed for the next.
Not to digress, but thanks for letting us talk about this for a second. Does anybody have any questions for, um. Charles, um, about this particular property?
Now, this is an addition, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It looks like it's gonna be built in front of the garage?
I'm tearing the garage down.
Oh, okay.
I gotta take it down because it's gonna be like four feet behind the house. So it'd be too close, so I'm ju, I'm just gonna rip it down. I can't put a car in anyways, it's too small, just, it just has junk in it.
Right? There's no other questions, is there any other discussion? There's no questions coming in, I'm guessing, related to this property?
Do we have any, um, of the public for this one here either?
I haven't seen any questions come through. Tim, are you seeing anything?
No, I don't, no, there haven't been any.
Okay. All right, um, if there's no other questions or discussion, um, do we want to close this? Uh, special permit public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on fifty-one West Street.
I'll second that.
Right, all in favor? Right, is there a motion to accept the, uh, special permit, uh, for fifty-one West Street?
Make a move to accept the, um, application in special permit for fifty-one, uh, fifty-one West Street.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Good luck.
Thank you, qu- quick question, how long, how soon can we start construction? How long does it take?
So the process is that I'll draft the decision with the conditions, um, which will include that you have to recertify. Who's living there every so years, but that's really the only big condition on this two-permit typically. Um, and once they file that with the clerk, there will be a twenty-day appeal period. And once that twenty-day appeal period runs out, provided we have not received any appeals. Then you'll be able to take that permit and file it with the registry of deeds. And at that point, you'll be able to get your building permit.
Um, I'm sorry, you said who has to certify who lives here?
If, so if, if you're in-laws or is it your parents that will be living in the apartment?
Yes.
So we just require, it's typically three years, every three years you just need to recertify that your parents are still living there, but it's not someone else.
Oh, okay.
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 Basically, there's a, uh, twenty-day period, once the town clerk gets it, for anybody to appeal our decision. Once the twenty days lapse, uh, you can pick up the paperwork or you'll be notified to pick it up. You'll take it to the registry of deeds, file the paperwork, bring it back to the town clerk. And then at that time, you'd be able to start your building permit process. So you have about twenty, probably about thirty days. Plus or minus, how fast people work.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, the next item is the special hearing for, um, site plan. And special permit review for one ninety-six Central Street. Do we have someone from one ninety-six Central Street on the line?
Yes, David Connolly is here.
Yep, I'm here and, uh, Dave and Jody Connolly are here, so.
Perfect, you wanna give us an overview of what this project is?
Sure, um, for the record, I'm Patrick McCarty, my company is McCarty Engineering in Leominster. And we were hired by Dave and Jody Connolly to prepare the site plan, uh, approval application for the property. They purchased us at one ninety-six Central Street. What happened here? Seemed to have lost Zoom, can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
That's weird, we lost the screen.
You might have minimized it.
Ah, there we are, sorry about that, so, um, like I said, it's a two-and-a-half acre site that they purchased. If, um, Sarah, could you let me share my screen?
Uh, Tim, I think you're the, can you give screen sharing ability?
Yeah, I said it so multiple people can share. Can you try it now?
Oh, I'm sorry, this doesn't seem to be working, hold on a minute, uh, um. Files.
I just need your co-host maybe try it again.
All right, yeah. You know what, I have, I think I had to open the document on my screen first. Sorry, gotta love these meetings now. No laughing, Jody. Ta-da, did that work?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that, so this is the, uh, the site plan approval documents that we prepared and submitted. This is the cover sheet, is the existing condition survey that we had done for the property. Central Street here along the bottom, the Rhode Island, Massachusetts line. Is over here on the left side of the page, so the property comes up and around like this. And it's bisected by the pipeline easement, so the development we're proposing is on the left-hand side of the parcel. You see here is a five thousand six hundred square foot industrial building for their business, alternative creative energy. Uh, there'll be an office section here at the front left corner, and then the rest would be, uh, shop and warehouse. They're a plumbing and HVAC company, we're proposing a twenty-eight-foot driveway in from Central Street. Office parking at the front, five spaces at the front of the building, a drive-in door at the right front corner. Thirty-foot driveway on the right-hand side of the building with two drive-in doors on that side. And then ten spaces at the rear, and then, uh, above that would be a crushed stone. Uh, lay-down storage area as they have. In and out for their projects, and a dumpster pad, uh, off the end of that rear parking area, so it's just far back from the street. As possible. This is the grading and drainage plan, managed to contain all the grading on the left-hand side of the site. And really not doing anything, uh, of substance over the easement area. We have a detention basin down at the street. Uh, the stormwater's been designed to be fully compliant with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Guidelines. We have a septic system here just off the edge of the front parking area. We've submitted that concurrently to the Board of Health, they've already reviewed and approved the septic plan. So all we would have to do is go and pay the permit, uh, fee to be able to construct that. We have a tight tank proposed for the interior floor drains at the three drive-in doors. Since we're on septic, we can't discharge that to the septic system, so Dave and Jody will have to contract with a licensed hauler. To periodically empty that tank, and then we have a proposed well. Up in the back portion of the property that will feed the domestic water. And then the, uh, heating would be served by propane, which there's a tank to the, on the back left corner of the building. That's, uh, an overview of the grading and utilities. Proposed landscaping plan, we have some trees coming in along the driveway, because we will need to clear cut section of the lot. Uh, basically from the street to the easement, to the rear property line and to the left property line would be clear cut. So we're proposing six trees along the driveways, you come in, a smaller tree just off the edge of the septic system. And then a larger one here at the corner. Uh, the rest of the area would be loomed and seeded, the right-hand portion of the site would remain wooded. And I'd imagine that there'd be some periodic maintenance of the, uh, easement by the utility company. Or by the Connolly's just to keep it looking presentable. Uh, lighting plan, we just have some wall packs on the, uh, building to light up the front side and rear driveways. And we have zero-foot candles at the, uh, property line, so we're not, uh, bothering any neighbors. Of course, on that left-hand side is the, the large power line easement, so I don't think there's anybody didn't bother over there anyways. Then we have some standard construction details on pages seven and eight. As I mentioned in the last meeting, we're a design build company. Dave and Jody's company does a lot of heating and air conditioning and plumbing work for us. And we'll be doing the site work and building shell construction for them, and then they'll finish the interior. So we've worked together successfully many times in the past and looking to do that in, in your town of Millville. And we're hoping that the board could act favorably this evening because they do, would like to get this going in this construction season. So with that, oh, the last thing I should mention is, we are aware, as we've discussed in the past, of the new paving and sidewalk work that's occurred along Central Street. And we're, you know, we'll take great care in putting together our new driveway opening so that it, it matches perfectly. And you can't tell that that recent work's been disturbed. So I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any signage planned that, or did I miss that?
I, I think just on the building, Dave, Jody?
Correct, just on the building.
Unless it's needed elsewhere.
Is there any lighting going down the driveway? Or by the street entrance?
No, just up at the building.
I think this is a great project for the town, it's a great area for it. I think it's kind of exciting to have something in that area, so.
I agree, it looks nice.
Yeah, I concur.
Agreed, I have a question just in curiosity. I know the first plan you submitted showed the driveway curb cut coming in prior to the mobile pipeline. And then crossing over at 90 degrees and utilizing the area differently. And I believe stormwater was going to be to the back, right?
We had stormwater on that initial concept, we had stormwater here and on the opposite side of the easement. And like you said, the driveway came in and S'd around, but we were able, after we did soil testing, we were able to design the septic and then work from the breakout that's required down and off grade, which you can see. So we designed the septic, then you have to have your breakout and then the, the slope down. So we were able to get that to dive down fast enough, and we had good soils here that were able to make everything work on our, on the left side of the easement. So we didn't have to go through the exercise of doing the S curve and having a second detention basin. And I'm reading, in this might be our mistake, but I'm looking and I know the cover of our application letter says, site plan slash special permit. But I don't recall that a special permit was required, did, did I, did my guys mistakenly leave that subject because we just submitted the site plan approval application?
Plan application and a special permit application in front of us.
Maybe I just didn't copy that.
Yeah, I forgot to get the special permit used and any special permit also, site plan review. So it's, they're sort of one of the same.
Okay, yeah, I just, I didn't recall, it's been a, no one's fault, but it's been a few months, so we've done a few applications.
Um, I do have a question. Uh, it looks like there's an NWI wetland map up in kind of the northwestern corner where the well is proposed. I'm not sure if you've talked to Conservation Commissioner or if anyone delineated wetlands at the site.
No, there's no wetland, are you saying it's a GIS wetland?
Yeah, there's a GIS wetlands there.
No, we, we walked the entire site and there's no wetland area up there.
Okay.
It's a, it's a pine, tall pine. Upland.
There is a ton of water to the right of the easement, the pipeline easement, where it drops off there to the right. There's a bunch of water over there.
Which is where we're not near.
Uh, that, Sarah, that's off. There's one that's on the abutting property, I'm looking at Oliver right now. Yeah, we will go out and verify that, but there's definitely no wetlands on the subject property.
Okay, great, yeah, I know site conditions are normally very different than with maps on Oliver, so just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, I know.
Are there going to be roof drains on, on the wood, on the roof of this that are gonna get put into the stormwater system?
Yep, so it's a single slope roof. So there'll be gutters and downspouts on the left-hand side as you're facing it from the street, comes down. And gets picked up in this stone infiltrated trench that continues through and down to the detention basin, so some of it'll infiltrate at the building. And then it switches to solid pipe to carry any excess volume down to the detention basin.
Do you have the square footage of that stormwater infiltration?
Oh yeah, we submitted a drainage report with this, it's about 130 pages.
Well, I, I understand what they are, I just, I didn't, I didn't see it, I couldn't, couldn't print that or, because it wouldn't come out on my printer.
Yeah, I can, I can zoom in here. So this is that stone infiltration trench. And the solid pipe comes down, and you basically have a 274 contour that's the top of the basin. And it goes down to 268 at the bottom. And then these, this square rectangle represents where we did the testing. So we dug four deeps there for the septic and two deeps here for the detention basin design. So this, this right here is that. Because there is some road runoff that comes in, so we have a plunge pool that spills into our main one.
That, that god rail is actually, uh, the state of Rhode Island's.
Yeah, well, this is, this is the state.
Correct, it's on a shopping, the state lines on a shopping angle.
Yep, some of it here is in Rhode Island and then some of it here is in Millville. There's, just colored up for you.
Tim, are there any questions for this hearing on the line? Any other questions from the board?
I actually, I have one question. Patrick, the total land service just shy of one acre, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's like 40,000 square feet.
Right. If there are no other questions, do we want to close this public hearing for this site plan and special permit review?
Make a motion to close the special permit and site plan review.
Second.
All in favor? Right? Is there a motion to approve the site plan and special permit for 196 Central Street?
Make the motion that we accept the site plan and special permit as designed for 196 Central Street.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Right. I think that's it for all the hearings that we have. I'm gonna go back up to the beginning, we had some minutes for us to take a look at from June 30th. Thank you, Sarah, for putting those together. If everyone's had a second to look at them, I'll hear a motion to accept the minutes from our June 30th meeting.
Make the motion to accept the minutes from June 30th as written.
Any discussion? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Aye. Right, that's done. Miscellaneous business. I did want to just quickly eat it, I know Sarah and Brian and I received an email this afternoon from Richard Hurtu. He says that he wants to inform us that he'll be starting the sidewalks and cleaning the stormwater retention ponds on Monday, weather permitting. That he's spoken to Brian and wants to know how the board feels about using concrete instead of asphalt on his handicap ramp. Brian, you might have more details on that than there are here.
Yeah, he, he did reach out to me to let me know he was going to be doing the, his cleaning and trimming of the stormwater ponds. Uh, and he also was getting prices for fixing of the sidewalk that we had talked about that was damaged. I believe it's 46 feet by the width of the sidewalk, which intersects with a handicap ramp. He was asking the question if he could, instead of using bituminous concrete, which is asphalt, replace that 46 feet of section with concrete, which would intersect with the handicap ramp that is already existing concrete with the ADA pad. I told him I didn't feel that was an answer that I could give him as the highway department. Uh, as the planning board would be the authority that approved the plan he has in place that showed bituminous concrete, which is asphalt for sidewalks with concrete ADA ramps, which he has. My opinion with that is that, you know, being on an intersecting corner, I don't see the problem with him extending the concrete from the ADA pad to up the 46, 50 feet, whatever the number was there, in my opinion. But again, like I said, I, I feel that's something the planning board needed to act on, and I, I know it's not part of our agenda, I don't know if we can act on it. But those were our conversations, and I did tell him I would, you know, talk about it and give my opinion.
No, honestly, Brian, I agree with you 100% that, you know, if he wants to do the concrete, I personally don't have a problem. And I think it's, you know, it's a better material, so, you know, hopefully he won't, well, I guess it'll be the town now, but hopefully the issues, you know, that caught that, with the damage that was done, hopefully that kind of avoids that whole, whole, you know, rat's nest, if you will, so. I don't see an issue with it.
Yeah, does anybody else, anybody have any opposition to this?
I mean, I just want to see, I just want to see the guy get, you know, be able to get this thing on the, on the alarm and just be done with this, you know, I mean, I obviously I've been on the board that, that long, but I mean, it's, I know it's, you know, far before my time, so. I mean, it'd be nice just to have it done for him once and for all.
Agreed, and that's why he's, you know, being proactive in, in this time and wanting to get it, get it done before the deadline, so I just don't know if, how the board has to act on this or not.
I don't know if we need to act, I, I think, I think if we don't have any issues with it, we could maybe just let him know that we, we don't see any issues with this, does that make sense, Sarah? This doesn't seem like an, an actable thing, it's more of a question.
Um, so I, you all know a lot more about the history of this than I do, but unless this is something that seems like it might be complex with prior approvals, I don't see any reason why you would have to really formally vote on it.
I, I agree, I just didn't, you know, wasn't my place to, to act individually.
Yeah, Brian, do you want to follow up with him?
I will, absolutely, I can do that tomorrow and let him know that Lloyd feels that, you know, concrete is an okay material to use, which it's a better material, actually, so. With that, I just to not reinvent the wheel, we, we know what he needs to do and get done. We want to help him get it done for the fall. Is there a way that, within the town hall, Sarah, you can look and see what you have in there for paperwork, meaning as-built plans? Uh, I, I feel that some of this might have been handed in a couple of years ago when he was trying to get approval, but I know we need, you know, some of those documents to present to the board of selectmen when it comes time, so we can be proactive and look for that also. Uh, the, the as-built plans for the development and I believe it would be the documented easements for us for accessing the two stormwater ponds that are there.
And this is for, is this carriage one estate, is that the progress?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other miscellaneous business that anyone has?
No.
Right. So a couple of quick things, well, actually, let's ask Sarah, any other projects coming in? Paperwork that you've seen, anything we need to discuss or, or things that we need to act on?
Uh, nothing major, there's been a couple of phone calls and emails. I think you've been copying on some of them, Sam, about both looking to buy land or interested in purchasing land and having questions about the zoning, so a few instances of that. I will connect with Bob Thompson tomorrow about his lost application, so that will probably show up on an agenda very soon. So that will probably show up on an agenda very soon. Um. Other than that, I think the only thing I've been thinking about is, and we can put this on another agenda. But I think that we could adjust some of the planning board rules and regs so that it, there's a little bit more responsibility on the applicants as to paying for legal ads and that sort of thing. That wouldn't really take a ton of work. And I don't think would require going to annual town meeting. Um, but right now you all don't really have a leg to stand in as, as part of getting reimbursed for legal ads. And that's something that you could definitely do. Um, and also just notifying planning boards in adjacent towns, which is required by Mass General Law, but is not currently required by your application process. That's just more work that someone in town has to do or someone on your board has to do. When we could really easily just update the requirements.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Okay, um, I will take a look at some of those pieces then and get it on the agenda for whatever the next meeting is.
Perfect.
Who was the gentleman that you just talked about that we're missing paperwork?
Fox.
Alfonso Heitz, is that his application?
Yeah, it was one of the very last things right before. He, he came in to meet us and he said that he had dropped everything off with Peter the day before. Um, and then like the next day or something, everything shut down. But I believe.
Didn't we see that on the desk, Pam?
I, I can't remember. I thought I saw, I thought we were looking at like some big, um, plans and a big packet.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't seen any of those materials in the planner space. So I'm not sure if they are with a select board member. It sounds like he might have given them to a different board and I'm just, I haven't seen any of it. So I'm going to see if I can get that information electronically and get that moving.
Okay.
Um, as for a next meeting, I think we talked at the last meeting about trying to get back onto our regular, um, second and fourth Mondays schedule, which would put us at.
On the 10th.
The 10th.
Yeah.
Does that still work?
Yeah.
Just so that Sarah has something to plan towards if anything does come in or if you get things worked out anyway, we'll plan a meeting on the 10th.
But that's going to be at 6:30?
The 6:30 still work for everyone at this time?
Mm-hmm.
The seven better, Brian?
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
11:44. Um, just a quick thing that, um, uh, Tim had mentioned to me that there was some issues with the live stream. He thinks he's going to be able to salvage it for posting it later on. But if, if anything does come up about that or if you hear anything, just so, just so you know. All right. All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.